We call this meeting to order. This is the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission, meeting of June the 23rd, 2022. We'll start off by roll call agenda. Our roll call, Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Franks.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Present.
Commissioner McLemore.
Present.
Commissioner Mann.
Present.
Commissioner Orr.
Present.
Alderman Peterson is absent, and Alderman, Commissioner Williamson is absent, and Chair Lindsey is present. Okay, accommodations have been made to ensure that the public is able to participate in the meeting. The public may participate in the following ways. Watch the meeting on Franklin TV or the City of Franklin website. Watch the live stream through the City of Franklin Facebook and YouTube accounts. You may email comments to planningintake@franklantn.gov to be provided in full to the commission and included in the minutes but not read aloud in their entirety during the meeting. Emailed comments are accepted until 12 noon on the day before the meeting. You may comment in person in the boardroom. If you wish to speak, we'll ask you to fill out a speaker card and provide those speakers, speaker cards to me before you come to speak, to the lectern to speak. Speakers may sit in the boardroom, or you may wait in the lobby. So the first item is the approval of our minutes from May the 26th, 2022. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harrison, and I had a second by Commissioner Orr. Is there any discussion, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Motion carries to accept the minutes. The next item is for citizen comments for items that are not on the agenda tonight. This is a time in our meeting that's open for Franklin citizens to be heard on items that are not included on this agenda. As provided by law, the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission shall make no decisions or consideration of actions of citizen comments except to refer the matter to the Planning Director for administrative consideration or to schedule the matter for Franklin Municipal Planning Commission consideration at a later date. Are there any citizen comments tonight?
Commissioner.
Okay, one at a time. Come to the lectern, give us your name and your address. We ask you to hold your comments to two minutes, please.
Evening, my name is Nicholas Bascal White. I live at 414 Figures Drive, Franklin, Tennessee. Here to speak about the rezoning section would be 11.
Okay, that's on the agenda.
All right, I was requesting to go after that presentation because we need to know more as a good amount of us from the community.
Okay, well, we come to that item. There's an opportunity for, for public comment at the, at the time of the item, so. Was there one other person that wanted to speak?
Same, same deal.
Okay, same deal, okay. Not a problem. Okay, so no, no more citizen comments on items not on the agenda. Are there any announcements?
No announcements.
No announcements, great, thank you. Okay, the next item is the vote to place non-agenda items on the agenda. The non-agenda process by design is reserved for emergency instances. Non-agenda items are considered only upon unanimous approval of the Planning Commission members. So are there any requests to place non-agenda items on the agenda?
We've had no request.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Okay, so the next item, item number two, is consideration, this is our consent agenda, consideration of items three, four, 12, and 13 on the consent agenda. Is there a motion, or is anyone desire to pull an item off of consent? Seeing none, is there a motion for approval of those items?
Move for approval.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Harrison, and a second by Commissioner McLemore. By roll call vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
And Chair Lindsey votes aye, that motion carries. Item number five is a consideration of Resolution 2022-28, a resolution amending the Madison PUD subdivision to extend the vested rights for the property located at 801 Del Rio Pike. This is an item that the Planning Commission considered last month, and there was a motion to defer that passed eight to zero. So, staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. That item, staff requested deferral of that item last month due to an error in publication. We have fixed that, so it was publicly noticed appropriately this time. Like Chair said, this is a vested rights extension request. I feel like we are aware of what vested rights are, so I will skip through that section of your staff report and go straight to the request. The request is to extend the vesting period for three years or until March 10th, 2026, to allow the applicant to secure final approval of a plan, secure any necessary permits, and begin site preparation. The history of the Madison PUD was that it was approved by BOMA on March 10th, 2020. The plan includes an existing, includes the existing Madison multifamily complex and proposes the demolition of one building and the construction of three additional multifamily buildings. The proposed development increases the unit count by 64 units. The project had two modifications of standards which were supported by staff and approved by BOMA to reduce the required buffer widths along the perimeter of the development due to the location of the existing buildings and porches, along with the presence of established vegetation. BOMA approved the plans as recommended by Planning Commission to remove the condition of approval requiring full access to Brink Place, and instead permitted an emergency access gate to be installed. The current status of the plan is that it's within its three-year period and is vested until March 2023. They currently have a site plan awaiting one-stop approval, which is valid until July 15th, 2022. Water and hydrant conditions have improved in the area since the approval of this project, so flows are no longer an issue. The plot does still need to resolve some stormwater drainage issues through the site plan and final process. In the request letter, the developers cited the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to finalize a public drainage easement as reasons for the delay in progress. If the vesting period is not extended, the project entitlements would cease to exist and stop work orders would be issued if applicable. A new development would need to be approved and would be reviewed against the current local development standards. In reviewing the plan against current regulations, the plan generally would comply. The biggest challenge this plan may have if it is required to meet current development standards is to meet the frontage requirements for new buildings. The site layout and locations of buildings and the parking lots within the existing development limit the locations of where new buildings and parking lots could go. All new buildings would be required to face an internal drive. Reducing the type of parking in front of new buildings to parallel spaces only, while promoting the pedestrian experience in both aesthetics and safety, limits parking placement for the required spaces needed. So it is unknown if the same density could be met under current development standards. An allowable density would be highly dependent on a new design for the site that complies with the zoning ordinance. However, since the site is already an existing development, application of the frontage standards to only the new buildings may require changes that are easily accommodated in the new plan. And alternatively, if development was allowed to continue under its current plans, the proposed building and parking placements would be consistent with the other 17 buildings on the site. Staff would continue to support the full access to Brink Place for better connectivity for the area, and any condition to reduce full connectivity would have to be granted by the BOMA. A modification of standards for buffer requirements would likely not be required along the entire perimeter as before, and would be limited to only where new development is adjacent to existing single-family lots. Based on the current layout, the requirements for transition zones would not limit development potential. Lastly, stormwater drainage issues would still need to be resolved and would need to comply with the current BMP manual. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the BOMA to approve Resolution 2022-28 if they determine that the continuation of the vested rights is in the best interest of the community. Due to this development plan being a small revision to an existing development, application of the new development standards would not have a significant impact on the overall site. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there someone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Scotty Burnick. I'm a landscape architect with Reagan Smith. We're requesting this, this evening, there was, during the process, we went through the zoning, I actually was involved during the zoning process, there was some off-site easement agreements that were needed to be obtained to improve a drainage issue that was off-site. Part of this request is to extend, while we were going through that process, to get the signatures and record that off-site agreement. Additionally, and not to be the broken record, as we all know, the COVID also happened, so there was sort of this, two items that really sort of hit our, our client in terms of their progress and when they plan to start. So I guess we're here tonight to just respectfully ask to, you know, extend the rights so that we can finalize the site plans that are at the finish line of getting approved, and then just work through these sort of last few details.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
Second.
The staff has recommended.
We have a motion for approval from Commissioner McLemore, and a second by Commissioner Harrison. Is there any discussion?
Well, I will say, you know, I voted against this project to begin with, however, I will not stand in the way of you guys, I know you've hit pitfalls of COVID and all of that, so I will go ahead. Part of the reason was because of the whole access issue, and we all know how I feel about that, but I will not send away you guys being given some extra time due to COVID, so that's why I wanted to explain why we'll be voting to give you guys your, this extra time.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Allen. Any other, Commissioner Orr?
It's, it's an addition in kind, and like staff said, it makes no sense to make them build to the new code.
All right. I agree.
Okay, any other comments, questions? By roll call vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lindsey votes aye as well, that motion carries. Thank you. Item number six is consideration of Resolution 2022-30, a resolution amending Wood Duck Court PUD subdivision to extend the vested rights for the property located east of Corthers Parkway and south of Murfreesboro Road at 250 Rosa Heim, Rosa Elm Way and 2050 and 2051 Wood Duck Court. This again is an item that was considered by the Franklin Planning Commission last month, and was voted to defer by a vote of eight to zero, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Under advice of city attorney, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Okay, Commissioner Harrison will recuse. Okay, and staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll allow Commissioner Harrison to leave. All right, the request to extend the vested period for this item is for three years or until September 9th, 2025. The history of the Wood Duck Court PUD was that it was approved by BOMA on September 10th, 2019. The plan includes 237 multifamily units within eight buildings. Heights for the buildings were listed as two to four stories. The project has one modification of standards, supported by staff and approved by BOMA, to reduce the parking requirement for one-bedroom units from 1.5 spaces to 1.4 spaces. Due to the location of floodplain on the site, staff required a second point of access through the adjacent car dealership for emergency purposes, and required that the access be recorded in a platted access easement. There is also a requirement to replace the bridge at Wood Duck Court, which was previously built below the floodway. This plan is within its first three-year period, and again, is vested until September 9th, 2022. The applicant has received approval of their CLOMAR, but does not have a valid site plan. They are currently resubmitted that plan, and it's working its way through the process. A site plan is required to be approved and grading work completed before a CLOMAR is approved by FEMA and accepted by staff. In the request letter, the developer cited ever-changing market conditions, the impact from the COVID-19 pandemic, and the significant amount of coordination required with FEMA as reasons for the delays in progress. If the vesting period is not extended, the project entitlements would cease to exist and stop workers would be issued if applicable. A new development would need to be approved and would be reviewed against the current local development standards. Since the vesting of this project, all six of the city's development standards associated with vesting have been updated. In reviewing the plan against these current city regulations, the plan as proposed would not meet development standards of today and would need to be redesigned. This is one of the first vesting extension requests where the plan being considered would be impacted because of the development standard changes. The biggest challenge this plan may have, it is if it's required to meet current development standards, is meeting the frontage requirements of the zoning ordinance. All new buildings would be required to face a public street, a private street, or an internal drive, and all parking not otherwise associated with a street or drive would be required to be completely behind the buildings. Parking could not be placed on the sides of buildings or in between buildings. Frontage requirements help to codify Envision Franklin's guiding principles of vibrant neighborhoods, exceptional design, and connected community. Reducing the type of parking in front of new buildings and orienting buildings along streets promotes the pedestrian experience in both aesthetics and safety, and relocating parking away from and behind building entrances promotes a resident-focused neighborhood rather than vehicle-focused development with a series of residences sprinkled throughout the parking lots. Frontage requirements would challenge this design to relocate parking within an already narrow site. The proposal took advantage of the hillside by nestling some of the buildings into the topography. This orientation does not allow for parking to be placed to the rear of buildings. The density of the site and/or the number of buildings proposed may not be able to be maintained as currently provided. In terms of other development standards, the modification of standards for parking reduction may still be requested. This request was previously based on similar requests for parking reductions that the applicant had received on other sites within the city with similar development patterns. The plan currently complies with buffer requirements against the adjacent single-family subdivision to the east and provides a larger vegetative buffer than would be required today. Lastly, staff would still require the bridge replacement for any project on this site and would most likely require a secondary emergency connection, access point, continuing the, sorry, continuing the necessary coordination with FEMA. The Planning Commission and the Board of Mayor and Alderman must decide if approving the vesting extension is in the best interest of the community. Should the request for vesting extension be denied, the applicant may continue to work towards meeting the first vesting milestone prior to their vesting expiring. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to BOMA to approve Resolution 22-30 if they determine that the continuation of vested rights is in the best interest of the community. Due to the existing environmental constraints and the longer narrow shape of the site, application of the new development standards would have a significant impact on the overall site and require the site to be redesigned. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to speak to this item?
This one doesn't have enough site plan.
Seeing none, Greg, please.
Hi, my name is Greg Campbell, and I'm the consulting planner for Community Housing Partnership. I'm here tonight with Wayne Weaver, who's the director of Community Housing Partnership, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion for this item?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner McLemore. Is there a second? Yeah, that motion would fail for lack of second.
I'll make a motion to deny this request.
We have a motion to deny by Commissioner Orr. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any discussion?
I have a discussion, I may have a question here. I read that there is not a site plan, there's not been an approved site plan, is that correct?
They had a site plan approved, it expired.
Okay.
And so they still have vesting, they just don't have a valid site plan. That site plan is currently moving through the review process again, under the vested development standards. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, okay.
Any other staff?
So how many of our standards have changed since this was approved? You mentioned that in your previous.
Right. All six have been updated since 2019 to varying degrees. I don't know the specifics of every single standard that's been updated, but yes, all six of them.
Pretty much everything that would govern how a site would be put together has changed since this was initially.
Correct. Now, in speaking with staff, I don't think the majority of those changes would affect the site, the one that, the changes that primarily affect the site are the zoning ordinance changes.
Right.
I think the other one could be the BMP manual, but I think they could get incorporated into the site, the changes.
Well, I was supporting this request because we've had several that have come before us in the last few months that was requesting vested rights, and the city staff recommended approval, and I listened and I went along with that, and as I saw the laundry list of things that you read and that I read before coming to this meeting, there are so many things that have changed, and it's going to be a different development. If it's approved, there's going to be a lot of, I mean, if it's not approved. And how realistic, when we talked about the affordable factor and how we wanted to have affordable units there, well, with this current climate and with the economic situation, how realistic is it going to be to have an affordable project out there regardless if this does not go through? And that's the question that I asked myself, and the fact that we had done this before, and I felt like that we needed to give the opportunity that we've given all of, I don't think we've denied anybody in the last several times that we've done this, so I will be voting against this.
And Chair, to clarify, staff necessarily isn't recommending approval. What we're saying is it is for this group and the Board of Mayor and Alderman to decide if it's in the best interest of the community. If you feel that way, then we're recommending approval, just to help clarify.
Right, I heard that, and you, and you put emphasis on that. You said if, if it's the best interest of the community, and I heard that too.
I think it's the best interest, since nothing has been done that needs to comply to our new standards, and that's why I chose to deny. I agree with that.
I agree.
Don't have anything else to add, but I agree with that.
Okay, any other discussion? By roll call vote, this is a motion to deny the request to extend vested rights. Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison is abstaining, I'm sorry. Commissioner McLemore.
No.
Commissioner Mann.
Yes.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lindsey votes aye as well, so that motion passes. Okay, item number seven is consideration of Resolution 2022-37, a resolution adopting a plan of services for the annexation of property located east of the intersection of Patensville Road and Pratt Lane outside of the southeastern part of the Franklin urban growth boundary, the UGB, by the City of Franklin, Tennessee. And I want to make note of the fact that this item number seven is part of a three-item project that'll be, that will consider tonight, seven, eight, and nine are all part of the same project. So with that, staff, presentation.
Yes, thank you. So in terms of the plan of service that is being considered with item number seven, the plan of service outlines how the city will serve the property should it be annexed, and gives any considerations for future development. Access to the property shall be provided from various existing roadways within the region. As properties in the area develop, road improvements and road extensions shall be required in accordance with Connect Franklin. No additional manpower or equipment will be necessary for either fire, police protection, or sanitation. Since this property lies outside the urban growth boundary, long-range city plans will need to be updated prior to future rezonings and development plans. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve Resolution 2022-37.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, and this is City of Franklin, is the applicant on this one? No, I'm sorry. Is there someone here representing the applicant on this item? No, okay. Is there a motion on this one?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Orr.
I'll second.
And a, and a second by Commissioner Harrison. Is there any discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Franks.
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison.
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore.
Aye.
Commissioner Mann.
Aye.
Commissioner Orr.
Aye.
And Commissioner Lindsey votes aye, that motion passes. Item number eight is the consideration of Resolution 2022-38, a resolution requesting a referendum for the annexation of property located east of the intersection of Patensville Road and Pratt Lane and outside of the Franklin urban growth boundary, the UGB, by the City of Franklin, Tennessee. Staff, presentation?
Yes, thank you. So as this annexation request, this property lies outside of the urban growth boundary, annexation cannot occur until a referendum has been held, where a majority of the property owners requesting annexation vote to have their property annexed by the City of Franklin. This resolution authorized the request to the Williamson County Election Commission to hold a referendum on November 8th, 2022 in conjunction with the state general election. A full timeline of the annexation by referendum is attached as an exhibit with this request. The subject property is within close proximity to other parcels that were annexed into the city limits in 2020, and partially fills a donut hole created by past annexations. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve Resolution 2022-38.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there anyone here representing the applicant? No. So is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Allen. Is that a second, Mr. Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison? Any further discussion? Okay, this is a motion for a- Okay, this is a motion for approval. By roll call, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Franks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. That motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, consideration of ordinance 2022-17, an ordinance to zone 23.19 acres, a state residential ER district, for the property located east of the intersection of Patensville Road and Pratt Lane. Staff presentation?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is requesting to zone the property ER should the plan of services and annexation be approved by the BOMA and the referendum for annexation pass. The planning and zoning jurisdiction of the city will extend to the annexed area on and after the effective date of annexation. Upon annexation, the planning commission will amend Envision Franklin to include these parcels into the document, including assigning design concepts for all the parcels, which is one. The proposed zoning of the state residential is appropriate for the existing land use and is consistent with the zoning of the surrounding properties that were recently annexed into the city. No corresponding site plan or development plan for the property has been submitted at this time. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve ordinance 2022-17.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone from the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, and there's no one here representing the applicant. So is there a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Harrison. And a second, is that Commissioner McLemore? Commissioner McLemore. Any further discussion? By roll call vote, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Franks?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
Aye.
Mr. McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. That motion passes unanimously. Item number 10 is a consideration of resolution 2022-39, a resolution approving a development plan for the cottages at 509 Hill Drive PUD subdivision for the property located south of West Main Street and west of Hill Drive located at 509 Hill Drive. And staff presentation?
Yes, thank you. Envision Franklin places this property in the neighborhood mixed-use design concept, which supports the proposed development. This plan was previously approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman in 2015, but recently lost its vesting and with it, all entitlements to build. This plan reestablishes the same plan, but under the development standards in place today. It is essentially the same plan that was approved by the Board of Mayor and Alderman in 2015 with a few minor adjustments to meet the regulations of the current zoning ordinance, including the required on-street parking. It proposes four single-family lots with a shared driveway and attached rear-loaded garages. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board and Alderman to approve resolution 2022-39.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item?
Nicholas Bascal White, 414 Figures Drive. When it comes to the street parking on Hill Drive, we've seen with the local halfway market that's gone in there, parking is absolutely insane. There's a lot of kids that live in the neighborhood, so concerned about what the street parking would look like, as aforementioned.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, is there a presentation by the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Christopher Wood with Kaiser Voguen Design, the applicant for, representing Tyler Pennington, owner of this property. As Amy has mentioned, this property has been submitted previously for development plan, rezoning, and site plan, but due to circumstances, it's lost its vesting, so we're working our way back through the process to obtain development plan approval and ultimately site plan approval, rezoning, or the zoning still stands as right now. I think to address the, the parking that's required, we are proposing four parallel parking stalls, stalls along Hill Drive to meet the new development standard in front of the units, and that is at, per the zoning ordinance. So we're here to answer any additional questions you may have about this development plan submitted.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Franks. And a second by Commissioner Orr. It's a proper motion and second. Is there any discussion?
Just quick, just to clarify, hopefully it helps you to understand, the parallel parking will be on-site, not on the road, correct?
It is off of the roadway. It'll still be within public right-of-way, but it will be like inset parking, added to the roadway, not in a travel lane.
I just want to make sure they know that cars aren't going to park in a travel lane. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none by roll call vote, Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Franks?
Aye.
Commissioner Harrison?
Aye.
Commissioner McLemore?
Aye.
Commissioner Mann?
Aye.
Commissioner Orr?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lindsey votes aye. That motion passes unanimously. Item number 11, consideration of resolution 2022-19, an ordinance to rezone 7.9 acres from Civic Institutional CI District to Residential 4, R4 District, for the property located south of Battle Avenue and west of Cannon Street at 1501 Figures Drive. Staff presentation?
Yes, thank you. The property consists of 7.9 acres and is the site of an administrative complex for the Franklin Special School District. Property is located within the historic residential design concept as defined by Envision Franklin. Envision Franklin states that infill development should maintain the established traditional residential character and reflect the scale of its surrounding neighborhood. Context sensitivity is a key component, including compatible building form, lot widths, and setbacks. A gridded street network, sidewalks, and street trees should be used to support connectivity and the pedestrian-scale environment. The R4 zoning district is compatible with the recommendations of Envision Franklin, as well as the character and pattern of the surrounding established neighborhoods. Should the project be rezoned, the existing buildings and current office and administrative uses would become non-conforming, and any future redevelopment or major site improvements would cause the property to lose its non-conforming status. The property does not have any other development applications with the city. Any proposed development, other than one single-family residence, would have to file a development application in the form of a preliminary plat or a development plan with an associated PD rezoning. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to approve ordinance 2022-19.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak to this item? Please come to the lectern and the rest of you get ready to come. Give us your name and address.
Yeah, sure. My name's Jared Sullivan. I live at 419 Figures Street. That's near the 501 Cannon Street, annexed property that Franklin Special School District wants rezoned. I'm here to oppose that plan. Our neighborhood, as she stated, is considered a historical residential area. The very first introductory page of Franklin's 2007 Land Use Plan, Envision Franklin, states that, quote, "The emphasis in historic areas is to preserve the established character of neighborhood." 501 Cannon Street has been zoned for civic use since its lease in 1952. That means it has been a public space longer than some of our historic homes have been standing. Rezoning the lot for single-family development would fundamentally and unquestionably change the character of our neighborhood and run counter to the city's stated development plans. The Cannon Street playground and field are, for all practical purposes, a public park, perhaps the city's oldest. Franklin has little green space left in our section of town, even if the school district sells 501 Cannon, the property should remain zoned for civic use as it has been for 70 years. That way, it will continue to benefit our entire community, not whatever rich California investors scoop up the lots. To rezon the property would be, would be to remove a prized public space from public hands and be an affront to the, to the people of the city generally and to our community specifically. I urge you to reject the zoning bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? If you'd like to come to the lectern.
Hey again. Nicholas Bascal White, 4014 Figures Drive. For background, nine years active duty military, I've moved to a lot of places in my life. There's a reason why we bought the house on figures due to the civic space. Equating with Jared saying, it's a civic area that doesn't support Envision Franklin. I'm opposing this. When you read through the Envision Franklin plan, guiding principles are vibrant neighborhood is number three, natural beauty, exceptional design, connected community, and context-responsive infill from five through eight. It's in violation of those, as I read it. Additionally, there's small children in the neighborhood. We do have a school. Traffic patterns would be severely altered. There would be, I'm not sure how you would reroute that traffic because it's going to close down specific roads in that area, specifically the bus traffic. And then additionally, we have creeks and streams in the area that are already overfilling at times from Vulcan plant, you know, the quarry. So I'd be concerned if more development goes in, the green space goes away, where does all that water drain? So down the road, five years from now, is this developer, this development going to pay for our flood insurance that we don't currently need? Those are my concerns and I would appreciate if you guys opposed it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Forrest Lada. I live at 504 Figures Drive. I didn't fill out my little cards. I wouldn't really plan on speaking today. My son has gone to Franklin Elementary. We've lived on figures for quite a while now. I think to categorize this as just simply getting rid of the annex is a bit of a falsehood. Over half that property is green space. Granted, it's got a little chain link fence around it, but you drive by there any time of night, probably even right now, I don't think the sun is quite down yet, and you'll probably see neighbors and families, pets and children using that green space. That's an important area for us. You know, going to the Envision Franklin plan, keeping the character of that neighborhood. I think, I think this space is important for that. Based on the agenda you've got tonight, you see where we're being, kind of encroached on both ends. No disrespect to the gentleman that spoke earlier about the four lots, but we've got it coming in from Main Street and now it feels like it's coming in from Columbia as well. And so, you know, we'd like to preserve the character of our neighborhood. On a logistics level, I know Nick mentioned it, but we're very curious to know what the traffic would look like if we do this, because as a parent, I know what the drive-through lane looks like and that's going to be gone. You know, we're talking about sending a lot of cars through our neighborhood and, you know, I would encourage, personally, I'm vehemently opposed to this, but I would encourage you guys to look at local stakeholders, not even just local stakeholders, neighborhood stakeholders here. We've got a pretty good representation tonight. We're just a small part of it, you know, and we can show up in greater numbers and speak on a more substantive level if we need to, but this is something we feel pretty passionate about and we're willing to, you know, really dig our heels in here, both on the civic forum, the public forum, and the legal forum. So, you know, I know there's some unofficial folks here to represent the development that are probably not, you know, quite speaking up quite yet, but, you know, we're, we feel pretty passionate about this, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come to the lectern and give us your name and address, please.
Tammy Hill, and I live in Brentwood, but I'm the real estate agent that sold 417 Perkins. And I saw a horrible photograph from Mr. Jared Little that owns the Triplex at the end of Perkins, and two small twin boys were in that creek, and they're covered on their face, on their body, front and back, to follow up with Nick said from Vulcan. And it's from the release of all of that stuff that's coming from Vulcan. I went over there two days ago because the water was rushing so much, and I pulled in the back and I took a video of all that water that was being released. And Mr. Tommy Jackson does a hard job of keeping that whole place beautiful for all those neighbors at that creek on both sides, but something's got to be done, just, just like what they, what Nick had mentioned. And I'm not even a resident, but the, but the, but the veteran that I sold that home to, 417, it's killing me to just see. I have already contacted Stormwater, which would be Casey Christman and his new boss, Jerry Hatcher, they are over there looking at that, but what's being done at Vulcan has got to stop. And that, that's all I have to say. And I'm sorry for crying a little bit.
No, that's okay.
But if you saw that child's body from two days ago, it, it would, it would break your heart too. And I'm happy to provide that to y'all going forward. And if you need my contact information, I'm happy to give that to you right now, but I certainly wasn't planning on speaking.
Okay. Thank you, Tammy.
How y'all doing tonight? My name is Joshua James. I'm 317 Battle Avenue. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I should have prepared a speech or something, but I will say I'm in opposition of the project as well. I just bought that last house right there on the left before that, that break up top is about to get some houses built on it. Big reason why my family and I were attracted to Franklin in the first place is the beautiful historic neighborhood. We absolutely love the layout of all the houses there, the green space, big, big reason. I moved my grandma out here, my daughter, plan on taking her to the elementary school. It's a big deal for us. This is where we plan on raising our kids and, you know, just really creating, putting our roots down here, and it breaks my heart to see all that going to go away and, you know, the building getting knocked down is one thing, but houses going in and not having that park space that we walk every single night, push her on the swing and, you know, kick the ball around with the dogs and everything like that. Seeing that go away is a kind of a big deal. You know, whatever rich investor's going to buy up all those lots, I'll tell them to take my house too and I'll get as well get out of here if that's really going to happen. You know, that's all I got.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please come forward.
Do you accept the two of us?
Yes, please. Just give us both of your names.
Good evening. My name is Lindsey Phelps and this is my daughter Ivy Phelps. My husband Kyle Phelps is in the audience too. These are our friends and neighbors. I just had forty of them over to my house the other weekend for a barbecue. We all are here in opposition of our community being taken away from us. And when I say community, I mean the green space that we enjoy as a family. I just want to say that something like this is irreversible, and it's one of the reasons why we purchased our home. It's one of the reasons why all of us purchased our home on Figures or on Perkins or on Battle. This space means a lot to us and it means a lot to Ivy, and our, our house is going to be in our family forever, another 70 years, and I really hope that Ivy has a chance to see the community the way that it's been for the last 70 years, and I just appreciate your time and the courtesy tonight to be able to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
How y'all doing?
Good.
My name is Sean Richardson. I live at 506 Figures Drive. I'm Forrest's neighbor, and I'm happy to be the dad of the twins she talked about that play in that creek. It was pretty crazy. She got, was mistaken, it was just one of them, got, something crazy happened, and I have no doubt it's from the runoff. That's not really what we're talking about. We're talking about a space of land that my boys loved to play in and ride their bikes by, and there's a little playground that they love to go to, and they're five, and so we're talking about kindergarten. And so when we start kindergarten at that school, traffic is already a little bit of a nightmare on our road. People use it as a cut-through and fly through it already. So I'm just assuming that you turn that into more homes, it's going to be more traffic and people fly through our neighborhood at a higher rate. And it will definitely change the And it will definitely change the character of our neighborhood. And as you can see, there's quite a few of us here. And so this is very important to us. My wife is at home with our twins, or she would have loved to be here and communicated all this as well. But we, you know, we love Franklin. We bought in Franklin. We love being here. And I would hate to see a green area just get turned into other homes and modern homes and up and downs that are just taking over everywhere. It just, it will change the character of our old 60s homes that we all bought for a reason. So I appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, I'm Steve Griffin. I'm an architect that represents the Franklin Special School District. We would appreciate your consideration of this request to rezon this property, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion on this item? Need a motion.
I'll need it for approval.
We have a motion for approval. By Commissioner Mann. Is there a second?
I move for approval.
You want a second?
Sorry.
This is a motion to to recommend to BOMA, right? Yeah. So you're seconding? To have a second. By Commissioner Franks. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
I will not be supporting this. I, you know, I was born and raised, live, still live here. I attended Franklin Elementary here. Franklin Special School District has every right to sell this property. However, this four units per acre, way, way too much, in my opinion. I'm very disappointed. I would have loved to have seen them try to sell this to a... There are many churches that meet in schools after hours on the weekend or whatever. I would have loved to have seen them do something else different with this. I live in this area. These 28 homes, if it's approved, and I pray that it's not, they're going to get to experience what people that live in this area like I do. They're going to get to experience the blast from the quarry, the dust from Vulcan, and all the other things that go on in this area. Too much. I agree with the residents. This is a very, the wooded areas that we don't have to drive to... Well, Jim Warren's out of the question because all they do is play ball there most of the time. But you don't have to drive four or five miles to Pinkerton Park. There aren't any parks in this area of town. That's something the city needs to do. You have to go all the way to Pinkerton Park. If you go to Jim Warren, they're playing football. They're playing baseball or whatever. But I hate this. I hate that Franklin Special School District fills the need to try to put 28 houses in this area. I will not support this. It's too much for this area. There's already too much... Columbia Avenue, any time of day, rush hour is from 7:00 a.m. in the morning to midnight. There's always a rush hour. We're going to put these houses in there. Battle Avenue is just an extension of Columbia Avenue. So what we're going to do is for residents who already have trucks and dump trucks on Downs Boulevard, Columbia Avenue is just like Spring Hill now. It's 24/7. So what we're going to do is put 28 houses right here. So there's no way in the world I can support this, and I pray that it doesn't pass. And so I'm very disappointed in Franklin Special School District to try to put this on this somewhat serene area in the city of Franklin. There aren't many areas like this left. What we're going to do now is take away another one. No way I can support this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I make a clarification just for your consideration? The R4 zoning district is not a prescribed density. So I can't guarantee that there will or will not be 28 units just still.
Maybe 37, okay.
It's a, it's more of a contextual requirement of that base district. I just want to make sure that no one assumes it's 28.
Okay.
Because we don't know that yet.
That's the first I heard, that it could be that type of district.
Me, too. I thought it was four, too.
That's the previous.
So that is one of my questions I want to add for discussion. And because I don't present anymore in the primary, we don't typically see R4 come in front of us very often. Can you remind us what R4 would be?
Sure thing. I can actually pull it up if you give me just a second. But it's a single-family residential zoning district, so the only applicable uses would be single-family lots. And it is, like I said, context-based. It's based on the, thank you, Jimmy, the established lot size of the area. So I'm reading from it right here. Thank you, Jimmy. The lot size must be 75% of the average lot size of existing lots on the same block face, but in no case shall lots be less than 6,500 square feet. To that point, the lot width must also be 75% of the average lot width of the existing lots along the same block face, but in no case shall lots be less than 60 feet wide. So it's looking at the area, putting lots as the same size as what's nearby within some degree. The other thing that would be required of the R4 zoning district is that all of these lots have public street frontage. So development will be limited to how they can put a road network through the site that meets street standards and, you know, connectivity. So there's that parameter as well that they will have to comply with, along with stormwater requirements and having that in the appropriate open spaces as part of the development.
And this property is within the historic overlay?
This is not within the historic overlay. I believe it's in the Central Franklin overlay, which I also believe has contextual requirements for, like, height of buildings, if I'm remembering a development similar to, in a similar area, that height is required to be contextual within a half a story, I believe, of what's surrounding it.
So another clarification. Height has to match, be consistent as well with the existing houses around it?
Let me confirm that for you.
No, it does not. No, they do it to my neighborhood.
If you bear with me just a second, I'll pull it up.
Hopefully, we have a, something following up a rezoning request, right? Another agenda item?
No, not necessarily. You only see a development plan if the developer is asking for the PD zoning district. What they're asking for now is R4, but without a preliminary plat or a development plan, the only thing they can do right now is one single-family lot.
That's what I thought.
To do any redevelopment of the site, they would have to provide a preliminary plat. Or alternatively, rezon to PD and provide a development plan.
So what we're seeing, then, is just a rezoning to residential to create attraction to the property? Because there's not an identified buyer or purchaser of this property? We're just changing the zoning on it?
I'm not, that would be a question for the applicant, whether it's a buyer situation or not. It's just the current owners requested a change to the zoning. Back to the height question, if you can see it on the screen, that in R4, building height shall not exceed one-half story above the average height of the existing buildings on the same block face, but in no case shall exceed two-and-a-half stories.
And no attached residential? It's a single-family, as it...
This is a single-family zoning district, yes.
Thank you for looking all of that up on the fly.
Yes.
That doesn't change my recommendation. And the reason why is I am absolutely sympathetic to everybody that spoke and to what you had to say. I think that you're in a unique position that this board, this commission, is to look at the proposal and determine if it's appropriate for the area. And given that it lies within Envision Franklin, I think it would be appropriate. You know, do I think Franklin Special should do it? You know, should sell the property? Not my choice. I think that y'all have an opportunity to stand in front of BOMA, and I think that would be an appropriate avenue, given that the city controls the property. That's a very unique situation here in that it's the city who is voting on this and controls the property. So I do think that the R4 would be appropriate, which is why I would support it.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, we have a proper motion and a second for approval of the resolution to recommend rezoning to the Board of Mayor and Alderman by roll call vote. Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Franks?
Yes.
Commissioner Harrison?
No.
Commissioner McLemore?
No.
Commissioner Mann?
Yes.
Commissioner Orr?
Yes.
And Chairman Lindsey votes no as well. So that motion fails. Is there a motion to deny?
So move, move, move to deny.
We have a motion to recommend denial to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, correctly?
Yes.
A motion to deny by Commissioner Allen. And a second.
By Harrison.
Okay, by roll call vote. Any further discussion on that?
I wish I hadn't voted for her, yes.
Vote your conscience.
Commissioner, or Mr. Chair, since the motion is against staff recommendation, can we have some additional contexts?
Do I need, you want me to repeat what I said again? Is that what you need? Do I need to repeat it? I could, because I could talk all night.
That's fair. That's fair. Comment, stand.
This is what I feel. So let me say to you. I feel, first of all, we're giving them a blank check. I feel if the city, if the FSSD wants this, come to us with more information. I don't believe in giving blank checks. Because giving a blank check, you can come in here next week and say, well, you know what? Let's put up whatever. Give me more context of what you want to do. Because you have every right as a property owner. Don't just waltz in here and say I want a R4. Give me more context. No, you want a blank check, and I'm not willing to give you one. You need, do you need more than that? Because I can talk some more. I was more than talking. I just feel like they just want, they want a blank check, and I'm not giving them one.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen.
You're welcome.
Okay, by roll call vote.